Danvers, as a preliminary matter, this is Dan Bennett, Chair of the Board of Selectmen. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond to the affirmative. Bill Clark?
Yes.
Diane Langus?
Here.
David Mills?
Yes, thank you, Dan, present.
Gardner Trask?
Here.
Staff, when I call your name, please respond to the affirmative. Steve Bartha?
Here.
Joe Collins?
Here.
Jen Braker?
She will not be joining us then.
Okay, thank you. Rodney Conley?
Here.
Kathy Ellsworth?
Here.
Thank you. Good afternoon. This open meeting of the Danvers Board of Selectmen held March 30th, 2020, consistent with Governor Baker's aggressive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings, and as such, the Governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of the public parties are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order which you can find posted with agenda materials for this meeting allows public parties to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so the public can follow along with the deliberation of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will not feature public comment. For this meeting, the Board of Selectmen is conveying remotely via the WebEx app. It is posted on the town's website identifying how the public may join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendings are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you and take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. All supporting materials that have been provided to the members of this party are available on the town's website unless otherwise noted. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless the Chair notes otherwise. The meeting business ground rules. We are now turning to the first item on the agenda. Before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for the effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. The Chair will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the Chair will go down the line of members inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. Some people should be muting their computer now. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the Chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage with other members, please do so through the Chair, taking care to identify yourself. And when we go through a roll call vote, and everything will be conducted by roll call vote, I'll call you in the same order as I introduced you in the beginning. With that, we'll go to the agenda. And number two on the agenda, the Board will consider a recommendation to delay the annual town elections from May 5th, 2020 to June 2nd, 2020, and annual town meeting from May 18, 2020 to June 15, 2020. Mr. Bartha?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The recommendation from me and from Town Clerk Joe Collins is to delay both the local election and the annual town meeting in light of what is happening locally, regionally, across the state and really across the country right now. We have consulted with the town moderator and confirmed that the polling and town meeting locations at the high school will be available on the recommended dates. The bill, there was a bill passed this past Monday, actually a week ago today. It was Senate Bill 2608. It was codified as Chapter 45 of the Acts of 2020, and it does authorize the Board by vote to extend and delay both of these things to either a date certain as we're recommending or without a date certain. So we would have the ability to amend these dates again if necessary, but at this point we'd be recommending delay to a date certain.
Thank you. Comments or question, Bill?
Bill, you have to unmute.
I was. Am I now unmuted?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry. I have no questions.
Okay, thank you. Questions, Diane?
No, I'm all set, thank you.
Thank you. David?
No questions, seems like good careful planning.
Thank you. Gardner?
I have no questions, thank you.
Thank you. So with that, I'll take a roll call vote to approve the recommendation as presented. Bill Clark?
Yes.
Diane Langus?
Yes.
David Mills?
Yes.
David, are you there?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Your vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Gardner?
Yes.
And my vote is yes also, so that passes unanimously. Thank you. Number three on the agenda, the Board will consider one of the following actions with respect to the fiscal '21 budget. Steve, I'll let you bring us up to date where we are on this issue.
The local bylaw, the Town Manager Act, which is part of our local bylaw, Section 32 in that document requires that on or before April 1st, the Selectmen transmit a budget to the Finance Committee along with recommendations. We were prepared to present the budget to the Board of Selectmen on March 14th. For obvious reasons, that did not happen, and for equally obvious reasons, a lot of the assumptions made in that budget likely no longer apply. None of the bills that are pending right now at the legislature would alleviate the town from that April 1st deadline. In speaking with David DeLuca today, it's possible that between the Governor's Emergency Declaration on March 10th and our local emergency declaration on March 18th, that we would have the ability to ignore that deadline, but my recommendation to the Board would be that we go with option A, which is to recommend the preliminary budget to the Finance Committee subject to further revision as the fiscal impacts of COVID-19 are more fully understood. And I did have a conversation with Sarah Lyons, Chair of the Finance Committee, last week. He fully supports this approach. The Finance Committee certainly won't be acting on this budget, and really what this would mean is that, you know, in the weeks to come, as we start to understand what impact this crisis may have on some of our major revenue lines, we'll be using the 314 budget as our baseline, but we'll be recommending adjustments to that. And so this would be, this action would be to satisfy our requirement in the bylaw to provide a budget to the Finance Committee, but we would come back again in the weeks to come and have our, I hesitate to say normal budget hearings, but whether they're on this platform or live, we would go through a revised '21 budget based on the realities that we're currently facing.
Thank you very much. Questions, comments, Bill?
No question.
Diane? I'm sorry. Something else, Bill?
Nope.
Okay, Diane?
So, Steve, what you're saying is we will pass what was presented to us as a preliminary, but that there could be adjustments made when we actually do line by line based on the COVID? Is that what I'm understanding that you said?
Yeah, technically, the action today would be to transmit the budget to the Finance Committee, but they have no intention of acting on it. And the way that we've written this agenda item is that it would, you would be recommending to them subject to further revision as the fiscal impacts are understood. So the implication is that the Board would revisit this budget once we are ready to make some recommendations on the various revenues, and then we would resubmit it to the Finance Committee at that point.
Okay, thank you.
David? Questions?
No questions, thank you.
Gardner?
I have no questions. When you're ready, I can do a motion.
Okay, so my comments are this certainly makes a lot of sense, and we are under the guideline of doing it by April 1st, hence why we have this meeting tonight so we can address this issue, and we'll take, if there's a motion, Gardner?
I move we send the existing budget to the Finance Committee with a favorable recommendation subject to further review and revision.
Thank you, Gardner. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, David. Any discussion? Anybody introduce themselves if they have comments? Hearing not all in favor, Bill?
Yes.
Diane? David?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
And Dan, yes, thank you. We'll go on to number four. Subject to pending legislation, the Board will consider extending the deadline for property tax exemptions and deferral from April 1, 2020 to June 1, 2020, or to some other date as authorized by legislation, and as I understand it, there is no authorized legislation. Is that correct, Mr. Town Manager?
As of this minute, there is no legislation that has been signed by the Governor. The House sent a bill to the Senate on Friday. The Senate voted on that bill today with some amendments. My understanding is it will not need to go back into conference. So that bill, which is Senate Bill 2619, includes a number of key provisions that were originally submitted by the Governor to the legislature on March 16th. Several of those provisions will allow us to do the things that are included here under Agenda Items Four and Five, and the bill explicitly authorizes the Town Manager or Mayor, depending on whether it's a town or a city, to implement these relief areas. And I would spend a minute talking about what those are. I want to mention something real quickly that I forgot to mention under number two, which is the delay of the local elections, and that is, one of the sections in the bill that was passed last Monday says that expiring terms will continue until a subsequent election is held. So in that case, for Diane, who's not running for reelection, she would remain a member of the Board until the election can occur. So I just wanted to clarify that because I didn't mention that yet. But specifically, under Agenda Item Number Four, we have a number of local tax exemptions and relief that we provide that are spelled out in Chapter 59 of Mass General Law. Those various categories locally are, you know, Clause 41(c), which is a tax credit for seniors; 17d is an income-based exemption for up to $420; Clause 22 has to do with veterans and their spouses; 37a is for the legally blind; and then there's a mechanism whereby residents who are 65 or older can defer a portion or all of their taxes for the next year. And so we, you know, we have applicants for those every single year. What this bill that is likely to be signed by the Governor today or tomorrow would do is allow us to move our local deadline to collect those from April 1st to June 1st. And if we were making a recommendation, the recommendation would be that we do that. I would like to do that, but I wanted to mention that to the Board as well.
So for clarification-
Ninety percent of our application-
Steve, I'd like to clarify something. This is Dan. You just said that there's a mechanism for people over 65 to defer their taxes. Is that not based on income, or can anybody over 65 defer their taxes?
I would ask Rodney if he knows dancer that off the top of his head. I do not.
Yeah, I do.
I know that you have to have been a resident for, you have to live in the state for 10 years, and it needs to be owner occupied. And yes, I'm sorry, there is an income threshold of $40,000.
I thought so, thank you. But just so people out there understand that not everybody over 65 can defer their taxes.
Thank you, Dan.
Okay, continue.
And I would know, we have, the assessor has confirmed that we've already received roughly 90% of these applications that we expect to see every year, but we do think extending this deadline to June 1st will allow all those who haven't, we're not able to get them in before we close the town buildings to do so. So we would be, my action would be to accept that section in the legislation, which is in, if you were to look up Senate Bill 2619, that would be Section 10 of this bill, which would authorize the Town Manager to extend that deadline.
Thank you.
So there's no action required here.
No action required, and we won't be reconsidering this because you will be making that determination. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so we need a motion of no action?
Can I just, just want to pipe in?
Introduce yourself.
What?
Introduce yourself.
Oh, Diane.
Give your name, thank you.
So that includes all property tax exemptions, veterans, disabled, elderly, assuming?
Yes.
Okay. And are we doing five at the same time?
I'll speak to five next.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions from any other members? If we can have a motion of no action?
I move a motion on Agenda Item Four.
And that's Diane. And is there a second?
Second.
Who's that speaking?
Mills, David Mills.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion that's been seconded. I'm gonna call a roll call vote, Bill?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Gardner? Yes, thank you. And Dan is yes as well, thank you. Number five, subject to pending legislation, the Board will consider waiving the payment of interest and other penalty in the event of a late payment of any excise tax, betterment, assessment, or appropriation thereof, water rate, or annual sewer use, or other charge added to a tax for payments made after its respective due date but before June 30, 2020, or to some other date as authorized by legislation. Kind of confusing all this, so maybe Steve will speak to this.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, we wrote four and five as catch-all items so that we could be prepared for any and all action that legislature may have taken between Thursday and today. So similar to number four, the Senate Bill 2619, which was voted on today, Section 11 includes similar language allowing the Town Manager to delay any tax penalties or interest that may accrue for bills that were due on or after March 10th and up until June 30th. So really, the big pieces for us would be our fourth quarter real estate tax, which is roughly $20 million, the first of our motor vehicle excise tax bills, which is about $3.5 million, and then, you know, water and sewer, you'd have electric bills, the monthly electric bills that would be sent out during this period, as well as every resident in Danvers will receive one of their quarterly water and sewer bills during this period of time. So what this would do is allow us to delay any interest from being accrued, which is spelled out in statute, until after June 30. So just to clarify here, the deadlines, you know, the due date on the real estate bill wouldn't change, and the big reason for that is that the majority of our bills go out. They get posted electronically, a lot of folks pay their real estate taxes through their mortgage holders that are, you know, transferred out of escrow. So those had already posted by the time this bill was being considered, so moving the actual due date would have potentially confused things on the back end, but what this means is that for folks who cannot make payments, you know, between now and June because of what's happening in terms of jobs and the economy, that the interest would be delayed and deferred until July 1st.
Well, you're recommending on number five, no action, is that correct?
I'm recommending no action, and my plan would be to authorize under this bill, across our tax and utility sides, the delay of any of these penalties or tax interests.
Thank you. Any questions, Bill?
No questions.
Diane?
Just to clarify, so Senate 2619 supersedes House 4586? Because that's the language the House put in.
So that's right. The Senate Bill 2619, which was voted on today, included a number of new sections that were not included in 4598, several pages having to do with what notary publics are expected to do under the current situation as well, some language governing what, talking about what the governing bodies of public agencies that have meetings, they have to hold. We haven't, again, this is all happening in real time, so we haven't seen an analysis of this bill yet, but the key pieces that we've been monitoring made it through and survived.
Okay, great. Thank you. No other questions?
Thank you. David?
No questions, thank you.
Gardner?
No questions, thank you.
I have a motion of no action, please?
I move that we have a vote of no action on Agenda Item Five.
Gardner, a second?
Gardner, a second, thank you. All those in favor, Bill?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
And Dan, yes as well, thank you. That takes care of the voting. The Town Manager will report to the Board on various items of interest, and I'm sure you could go on for an hour, Steve, on what's going on, but why don't we succinct?
Well, I'll keep it brief. I'd like to mention two other sections in the bill that was passed today that are of note. Section 13 in the bill, 2619, would allow for restaurants that have liquor licenses to do off-premise delivery, and that's not a local option. That language was in the House bill, survived in the Senate bill, and would apply with a couple of key stipulations. One is proof of age, obviously. The second is the time, you know, that no orders can be placed after midnight, and the third would limit the amount that can be delivered. But I think, you know, the theme across the Commonwealth has been that, you know, this is hitting a lot of our small businesses incredibly hard, so those restaurants that have stayed open to do takeout and delivery only, this is something that came up through, you know, their efforts to try to continue to stay in business. So this would be effective on passage. And also, there's a very key section in this bill, 2619, again. Section 17 covers in great detail tolling permits, timelines, so this is, you know, these are items before planning boards, zoning boards of appeals, conservation commissions, and the like, and statute's very clear about how long these bodies have to take action on certain applications. Section 17 would effectively freeze those timelines. So, you know, even if an application was received two days before the Governor's Emergency Declaration, this bill would freeze those until 45 days after the Governor lifts his emergency declaration. So this is really important from the municipal perspective, because while, you know, towns and cities are trying to manage, you know, this public health crisis and make sure that, you know, core services are being delivered and vulnerable populations are being protected, this allows some relief so that we're not scrambling to take, you know, to post and take action on routine applications and the like. So those are two sections that don't have any bearing on our call today, but I wanted to just mention. And if, Mr. Chairman, if it's all right with you, we did, this is an opportunity, I think, to clarify something. Part of this strange new world for us in remote meetings is the expectation that the public can participate or not participate. When the Governor issued his, and I believe you received a copy of this declaration with your packets today, but when the Governor suspended certain provisions in the open meeting law, he was trying to strike a balance between, you know, the towns and cities' ability to conduct these meetings with the public's, you know, sacred right to be able to know and see what's happening. So we've, you know, we've modeled, we've adopted a model where the meeting itself is on WebEx and it's being streamed live on DCAT. The declaration doesn't actually require the meeting to be streamed live, but we feel that's important. It doesn't require public participation. It does require public participation when there are public meetings, or I'm sorry, public hearings associated with an agenda item, and we do not have any public hearing items on today's agenda, but I wanted to, I wanted to make note of that, that we are, you know, we're in full compliance with the revised open meeting law, and we are working to make sure that when we do have a public hearing, that we're set up to have live participation as required. I would like to mention just a couple of things. I think, you know, we've issued our declaration on March 18th. On March 23rd, the Governor declared all nonessential businesses closed. That declaration runs through, I believe, April 7th. Most of our local actions, including the closure of, you know, personal service businesses like spas and tattoo parlors, run concurrent with that. We are hearing that the Governor may be making a statement tomorrow on extending some of those. You know, the schools are now closed through May 4th. I think nationally, people are saying, you know, April is sort of, the end of April is the earliest that some of the social distancing will come up. So we will be prepared tomorrow or at the latest, early Wednesday, to issue some additional guidance to the local community residents and businesses alike in terms of, you know, what action the Governor has taken and what we are doing locally as well. Just briefly, a couple of things I'd want to update folks on. We'll be putting up, you know, we've closed our playgrounds because the virus can survive on surfaces for a couple of days. The rail trail has been a lifeline, I think, for a lot of people who want to get out and exercise. We've had a couple of concerned residents reach out to us about the crowding on the trail, but we are, we're putting up some signage to encourage trail etiquette and make sure that people maintain safe, you know, social distancing from each other, but we don't have any plans on closing the rail trail. I know that's been a concern that some folks have raised with us. I had the chance to sit with Greg to do an interview on Friday talking about some of the things that the town has done, so I won't repeat all of that as part of my comments now, but I would say to those who are listening, thank you for being supportive and willingly complying with some of the actions we've taken. These are kind of unprecedented at times. We're not used to having our doors locked. We're used to being open to the public all the time, but the community has really embraced some of these extreme measures that are required in order to keep people safe. You know, we're hearing in real, you know, on a daily basis from our local state partners in public health and not local hospitals, things are worsening in the hospitals as expected, and I think the next couple of weeks are going to be, you know, when we see the wave or the surge or whatever that is going to look like. So we'd ask people to hang in there. We'll continue to do our best to post information on the website, on social media. We're issuing press releases to the newspapers, and then the next day or so, we'll be doing another town-wide call with some key updates. But I think that's about, I think, as you said, and I could go on for quite a while about what we've been doing. I will note, you know, we've had a lot of residents reach out to us and ask how they can, you know, wanting to volunteer and help and whatnot and make donations, and so the town is not accepting donations, but, you know, one of the local nonprofits that several people have given to is the Danvers Community Council, which runs the food pantry and also provides financial assistance to individuals, but there are, you can't really go wrong. There are a lot of, you know, good local nonprofits to choose from, and if folks want to give back or participate in some way, that would be a good way to do it.
Thank you. Are you all set?
I'm all set, Dan, thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Folks, we do have a consent calendar. Can I have a motion to accept? Go move.
Seconded, Gardner.
Gardner, thank you. Bill?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Diane, a vote, thank you. Diane, a vote for, thank you. David?
Yes.
And Gardner?
Yes.
And Dan, yes. Thank you. College of Congress, welcome to business. I'll give everybody an opportunity to say something. I know what heads on everybody's mind, that everybody stays safe and be well, their families. But we'll start with Bill. Comment. New business.
Thank you, Dan. I'd like to especially thank all the people in the food service industries that are staying open, and the grocery stores to allow us to get our foods as we need it. In a role that I've been playing for many years now, recognizing past employees that have passed away, we had a significant employee, former employee of the school department, Mrs. Kathy Cohen, who was one of the first teacher aides in Danvers back in 1971. And actually, she ran the copy center for the town, for the school department, for many, many years. So if you wanted things copied or available to the town meeting or the school department, Kathy did that. Kathy just passed away, but she had served in Danvers from 1971 until her retirement. Thank you.
Thank you. Diane?
Yeah, I want to, you know, thank those people who continue to work, especially our hospital people, you know, looking across the country, at the way that they're working and the conditions that they're working. Just my heart goes out to them, and then, you know, they're leaving their families. So don't forget to thank them. Our postal workers are still working, you know, making sure that people are getting checks, and our banks are staying open. One of the biggest fears that I'm having over and over is people think they're going to lose everything. So I'm very proud of the town for the work that they've been putting in. Steve, you've left your family, and, you know, and so hasn't the whole management team to keep everything running, keeping our people paid, working to keep our students still working. You know, that's really important. So, you know, I really am appreciative of all that. And when it comes to the rail trail people, this is how it should work anyways. You're supposed to stay to the right. And when you're walking side by side, if somebody's approaching you, you're supposed to go single file. You don't split. That's any trail that you walk, even when there isn't. So it's a good time for everybody to step up and learn how to use a trail appropriately. But right now, if you're walking side by side, somebody's approaching you, you are supposed to go single file. It's really important. You know, we really have to stay six feet away. So, and I love seeing everybody out there walking. It's good for mentally and physical. So I'm proud of the town for having that rail trail. So thank you. Thank you to the town employees for continuing to work.
Thank you, Diane. David?
Thank you, Dan. If you see a police officer or another town employee out doing his or her job while the rest of us are feeling safe at home, wave to that person, and if you can, say thank you out loud. And I have watched the town hall across the street, Steve and the other people who have been managing during this absolutely unbelievable time. So I've never been prouder of our management team, our town manager, and the rest of our wonderful people. So I say thank you to you. Keep up the good work, and let me know if I can help. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
I just want to echo that. I also want to thank the school for trying to maintain some normalcy. I know that they are trying to do classes online and keep students engaged. So thank you to the school department and school as well, and the teachers, and just everybody, stay safe. Thank you.
Thank you. I did have a call just before this meeting from a resident. He's 77 years old. He likes to read, and he's very disappointed he can't get into the library to take books out. So Steve, offline, I'll give you the gentleman's name and number, and perhaps somebody can reach out to him. I tried to explain to him that it's unlikely we'll open up public buildings. Unfortunately, he doesn't have a Kindle or a laptop, so he can read. So I feel for these folks. Their life has changed dramatically. There's nothing normal about what we're going through, but I just want everybody to stay safe and stay at home the best you can. And if there's anything else, I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second, Gardner.
Gardner, thank you. Bill, in favor?
Yes.
Thank you for being here. Diane?
Yes.
Thank you for being here. David?
Thank you. Yes.
Thank you for being here, Gardner?
Yes.
Thank you for being here. Steve, Joe, Rodney, Kathy, thank you for being involved today. You didn't say much, but I appreciate the work that you're doing and the fact that you're actually going to work is admirable. And with that, good night. Deandres?
Be well.
Until next time.